Begin with, would you mind telling me your name and just introduce yourself however you'd like to?
Okay, my name's Al Clark.
Okay, good intro. And tell me about your involvement with the creeks and what people should know about the creeks. And I'm interested in the storm drain, or the channelization of them, and why one's better than the other, and perhaps about when things happen, if you know offhand.
Okay. Well, I know that after the floods of 1969, we had big rains, you know, it was one of those rains for 40 days and 40 nights kind of events with a lot of flooding, and I guess there were some issues, and so the Army Corps of Engineers came in and channeledized some of the creeks, but apparently a deal was made to keep Carpinteria Creek unchanneledized. This is what Ernie Wilbrandt told me, that they, you know, were determined to keep Carpinteria free of channelization.
Why?
To keep it natural. You know, the creek becomes a kind of ecosystem, you know, you have a cycle of life happening there in the creek, it's drawn to water and the habitat. When you have a concrete creek, birds will try to go there and drink water and such, but they can't really live there, there's no plants, there's no trees, there's no shelter, there's no shade. So, and there's no recharge of the water, so this is a very important issue now, is that we like to recharge as much runoff or wastewater as we can, rather than let it go to the ocean, and well, when you have a channelized creek, it's all going to the ocean. When you have a creek, you're allowing for a lot of recharge to occur. Anyway, the Creek Committee was started really by some citizens, and it was kind of typical of a lot of citizens groups. Volunteerism is a huge component of what makes Carpinteria special, a lot of people being involved in their government, in their community, and in their future. And I think, I wasn't really involved in it at first, but I believe with some citizens kind of seeing an area where their government could have been more involved, and wasn't. And what had happened was that there was a development on a particular site located at the corner of Arbo Verde and Carpinteria Avenue, and the proposal was to have seven condos on a second story, cantilevered out over the creek, on top of some commercial units, very large building on a creek with no respect to the setback or anything on the creek.
And when was that about?
That was in about 1990, or yeah, about 1990-ish, maybe 91. And so a group formed to try to lobby the government on behalf of reducing the size of that project in order to protect the creek, because it was found that there were some standards in the municipal code for protecting the creek, but the city was ignoring them, or hadn't even looked at them. And that was part of changing, the government in 1990 was getting a little bit more, paying more attention to the law, basically. So with respect to this particular project, yeah?
And so the group was created, the Carpinteria Creeks Committee?
Carpinteria Creeks Committee was created by Bob Hanson and a gentleman named Gilbert Moore, and I joined it shortly after they began, maybe six months or something.
And the development kind of spurred it?
Yeah, the development spurred it, and the development that we're talking about, actually, that project went on for about 10 years. At one time, the city finally, they asked them to do an EIR of their project, they refused to do it, so they withdrew their project. At that point, we tried to buy it, the Creek Committee tried to buy it, seeing this was the best way out of this dilemma for the developer, but we were unable to meet the price. And so it was eventually developed, but what happened was, the Creek Committee was formed, and we began going to the government and trying to get different aspects of the creek protected. And that really, it really turned out well, because the government, the city government realized that they needed to play a larger role in the protection of creeks and watersheds, and they basically started doing everything that the Creek Committee had been doing. And they implemented a creeks preservation program, so it's part of the city law now to do all the stuff that we were asking them to do, and so the role of the Creek Committee actually diminished, and it hasn't disappeared, it's only functioning now as maybe you'd say a watchdog, making sure that the city is following its own laws. But basically, it's kind of a success story.
About when was the creeks preservation program started?
That was in about 2004, as a part of the general plan update. The general plan gets updated every 20 years, and that, it's a very long process, that process started in 1997, and was only finalized in 2004.
Are you aware of the channelization of the creeks when that happened? So I'm covering any issues between '65, I believe some of them were, can you talk about that?
I think a lot of it happened in 1969, after the flooding.
What happened then?
Well, there was, there were a lot, there'd been a lot of development that was put in too close to the creek bank, and that often happens in this kind of climate, where you have very dry spells, and then you have some wet spells, and, you know, people allow development to happen right, very close to creek banks, and boom, all of a sudden there's flooding, and you know, causes problems.
And that's when maybe Santa Monica and Franklin Creek?
Right, I believe so, I'm not really sure, you know, which ones, but I think that's right, definitely Franklin.
Franklin Creek was channeledized?
Yeah, probably Santa Monica at that time also, I'm not really sure.
So, society's kind of gone between liking natural creeks, thinking creeks need to be channeledized, and then now appreciating what the natural creeks again, has that been kind of a trend recently?
I guess, yeah, I think, I think that's a trend for a lot of, a lot of natural areas. I mean, there was, at one time in Carpinteria's history, there was a beach here, but nobody lived near the beach, the people were not interested in the beach. My neighbor's husband is from an old-time family here, and I guess his grandmother bought a house on the beach, and everybody thought she was absolutely crazy, why would anybody want to live down there? You know, and so 100 years later, boom, it's the most valuable property you can get, so, you know, things change like that, but I think there's a, people are getting more attuned in nature, and recreation in nature, but also the importance of the natural environment to our health.
And also, the reason creeks should remain natural, can you go over them again, both aesthetic and practical?
Well, you know, I think what happened, going back to your early question a little bit, what happened was is that people didn't, people didn't really appreciate creeks, and so they built, they allowed development to occur too close to creeks, and then when they flooded, they realized, yeah, we need to have either a channel or a setback. Well, you couldn't, you couldn't have a setback for buildings that had already been built, and so that's why they did channelization. I guess you could do a setback, you'd just have to tear some houses out, but anyway, that was, that was the option there, was to channelize creeks, but you, you know, you have all this water rushing down the creek, and none of it gets recharged into our important aquifers, that's basically our water supply, all that water's basically being flushed out to the ocean. So with a creek, you have a natural surface, you can, the water penetrates, goes back down into the aquifer, and then we can pump it out and reuse it. Also, you have, it's a, you know, it's a very, very beautiful place aesthetically speaking, with large trees, and it's a good, it's a good little classroom of nature for children, you know, we see classes leave school and come down and look at the creek, and you know, the kids can see the polywogs and things like that. And then also, the, you know, there's a lot of interest in getting the steelhead trout to come back up a creek, and it's kind of a big deal, but they can't, they can't do it in a channelized creek. So I think that's, I hear that's pretty close to happening in Carpinteria Creek, if it hasn't already, that steelhead will be able to go back and spawn again in the upstream.
Also, the water filters the pollutants?
Right.
Can you say something to that effect?
Well, if you, if you have some water, if you have some water runoff, and it has pollutants in it, if it, if those, if those, that water rushes straight out to sea, all those pollutants are going to wash out to sea. The water that penetrates the ground, or you know, through the permeable surface, the dirt rock surface, that acts as a filter to remove pollutants from, from the water that actually gets down to the aquifer, so that when you, when they pump that up and you drink it, or it's processed, those pollutants aren't there anymore.
In a moment, I want you to talk about the change in council direction in 90 that you helped with, but first, could you tell me about the Peace Corner, how did that come about?
That came about in, in August of 2002, there, there was a big PR campaign by the White House to roll out a new war, and...
That was the Iraqi War?
That's the war with Iraq, and it was, I don't know if you remember or not, but they, they realized in about the third week in August, says, oops, you don't roll out anything new in August, because everybody's on vacation. And so they started that PR campaign again up in September, and, but what was happening was that, it was as if, to our minds, that there were no alternative voices heard in the media. You know, you turn on any, any channel practically, except for perhaps Democracy Now!, or something like that, and everybody was beating the drums for war. And, you know, if you, if you look back at, I don't want to get too much into this, but if you get back, if you go back to 9/11, you know, Iraq really wasn't part of that, so why are we going to war with Iraq? You know, so people had a lot of questions about, you know, there's no nexus for, you know, why are we going to war there, and, but there were no, and going back to that time, everybody was beating the drum for war, and so...
And the president then was?
George W. Bush. And, so we thought, you know, we needed to tell people that, that somebody else has a different opinion, whether you agree with it or not, somebody else has a different opinion, and, and here's our way to do it, we'll exercise our First Amendment rights by standing on the corner and waving a sign, and we'd be happy to talk to anybody who comes by and have a discussion about it.
And what did some of the signs say, and what message were you trying to get out?
You know, it was not that coordinated of a message, any sign anybody wanted to bring was pretty much okay, I mean, some were very generic about, you know, peace, or no war in Iraq, and things like that, and...
Were you, were you out there the first time that people were out on that corner?
Absolutely.
You don't remember what weekend that was?
Yeah, it was, it was the, it was the first day of Avocado Festival, so it would have been October 3rd or 4th of 2002.
Friday night, huh?
Friday night.
And do you remember who else was out there at the beginning?
Well, it was a kind of a brainchild, my wife Kathleen Lord, and then she, she got Betty Songer and Ted Rhodes to help, and then we got some other people to come out, I can't remember everybody who was there, who was there at first, I think it was relatively small at first, but they, the numbers quickly grew to 40 or 50 people a week prior to the beginning of the war, which was in, you know, March 17th, 2003, something like that.
And then the Kitty Corner for a while, a short while, what happened there?
Well, I think there were people, people that, that, you know, were kind of doing what we were doing, but you know, they were reacting to us just as we reacted, that there was no alternative voices in the media, and so they were saying, well, we're gonna, we're gonna be on another corner, and you know, we're gonna hold up a sign as to what we think, which was, they thought the war was a good idea.
And which lasted the longest?
Well, they kind of, when, when the president went to war, I mean, I remember right before the Iraq War began, there were huge demonstrations, actually all over the world, I mean, there were millions of people involved in demonstrations against the war, and the president acknowledged those, but said, no, we're gonna go to war. And, and so I think those, the people on the other corner, the pro-war people, like, it's just my guess that they decide, okay, well, well, we want, there's no more need for us to be out here, and so they left. And of course, if we're for peace, we probably have job security, I mean, we're kind of, we're gonna be out there, you know, for quite a while, in fact, we have a lot of our original members have passed on now.
Well, now, I'm gonna pause a second, then we can get into it.
Okay.
So tell me about politics in CARP in the 80s, and then how they changed in the 90s, and your involvement.
Well, I just came in 1986, and there's a little bit of a learning process, you know, you don't, you don't know everything right away, but I learned that there was a, you know, I would read the newspaper, and I would see that there was a lot of development going on, and additionally, that the city was running in the red, and that they were, they had to do some, generate some cash, and so what they did was, they, they took out some certificates of participation, and, and we're still paying on that debt from those, but, you know, there just seemed to be some, some questionable things going on, and particularly with the development, and the interest of, that there was to develop the bluffs, you know, there was, people, people may not know, or they may forget, I mean, there was a proposal to build 350 condominiums and 200-room hotel, along with a lot of other amenities, and, you know, it's a huge amount of traffic, and so there were a lot of people that, that were opposed to that, and that was one of the central issues in the election of 1990, because that development of the bluffs was, was coming to a head at that time. There had been a lot of contentious hearings, or very many, many people, citizens that testified against it, but felt like they weren't being heard. The city in the spring of 1990 attempted to, to have a voter initiative, which was Measure M, to do a redevelopment district to raise more money, and there were a lot of people that, that studied up on redevelopment agencies and actually knew a lot about them, I was involved in a, in a debate that was held on Measure M at the, at the high school, and anyway, that was, that was a very interesting campaign, and it was, in that spring election, the Measure M lost by 20% to 80%, so overwhelmingly, people didn't want the redevelopment agency, and so redevelopment is very complex, but it involves taking tax increments that are supposed to go to other places and keep them in the city. So some monies are supposed to go to the state, to the schools, da-da-da, and so redevelopment's a way to keep more of the money, tax money in the city, and to generate new tax money. The redevelopment agency was gonna include all of Carpinteria, so that's why a lot of people were interested, anyway, that kind of dovetailed, because the council election was in the fall, and it was kind of like, oh, we won the Measure M 80 to 20, the fall election is ours to lose, and so we, we got some candidates going, I was thinking about doing, but I didn't at that time, but I was their campaign manager, and that was Donna Jordan, and Brad Stein, and Mike Ledbetter, and they're all great candidates, and so they all won. And the election is on approximately the first Tuesday in November, you know, November 5th, November 7th, whatever it is, and there was another, Donna and Brad and Mike won that election, and the bluffs had not been approved yet, but they, at the next regular city council meeting, because the new city council doesn't take seat until December, the old city council met one more time, and they passed the, they passed the bluffs development at that time. So I remember the, the night of the swearing-in is, you know, maybe the second Monday in December, something like that, anyway, fairly early in December, well, the very next day, the Coastal Commission was gonna approve the bluffs plan, and that hearing was in San Diego, so we went to the, we went to the Carpinteria City Hall, and Mike and Brad and Donna were inducted into their, or put on the, on the city council, and immediately after that, Mike Ledbetter was sent, I mean, immediately, just he left right from the city council chambers to travel to San Diego, I believe Arturo Teo drove him down there, and he got up to testify, the Coastal Commission, saying, yeah, we're the new government in Carpinteria, and we'd like to pull that plan back, because there's a few more things we want to look at. And so that's, that's how the, the bluffs development was, was put on hold, and also kind of that background behind the getting elected by the slate, but you know, there was a lot of aspects to it, they wanted to improve the city's fiscal outlook, they wanted to provide more open government, more participation of citizens in government, more listening to citizens, make, make a government more user-friendly, if you will, and so I hopefully that's, I mean, I think that's continued until now, at least we're trying to keep those things going.
Was there some vote by the populace that approved bluffs development?
No. I don't, there was, there was one, there was bluffs development of an oil refinery that, that, that was one, I'm not sure of the outcome, because it wasn't built, but that was in the 60s, that's the only one I'm familiar with.
Do you want to say anything more about the change in council direction in the 90s?
No, I think that's, that's about it, I mean, it kind of, it went back and forth for a while, I mean, the slate was not always in the majority, you know, and because Mike Ledbetter declined to run once, and so there was an imbalance, and then he came back, and you know, so it kind of went back and forth in that regard a little bit, but you know, I think we've prevailed.
Tell me about the Venico issue, a recent issue.
Well, how much time have you got? That's been going on since 2003, when they first put in their application, and, you know, they, I guess, they, they, there was an EIR conducted, and it came up with 11 Class 1 impacts, and so when you have an EIR in California, they, they look at all the risks to the environment and to people that is posed by a project, and if those can't be mitigated or resolved by, by taking some action, then it's, it's called Class 1 unavoidable impact, and you cannot approve a project that has one of those unless you pass what's called a statement of overriding considerations. And, and so there was a CIR, a draft EIR, that had 11 Class 1 impacts, and, and Venico must have realized that the city council probably didn't have the will to pass the statement of overriding considerations, and, and their project would probably be denied because of these 11 Class 1 impacts. So they, they chose to do a voter initiative, and that was called Measure, gosh, I don't know, I can't remember, Measure P? I don't know, Measure M? Anyway, that, I mean, that's fairly recent history, and, you know, that was another, another example similar to this redevelopment thing, where the people really came out, and, there was huge public response and reaction to that, to that ballot initiative, because basically what they had to do to eliminate those, all those impacts, is to, is to rewrite our general plan, and the way you do that is you make an, it used to say, you gotta, for example, you gotta protect the views from this place to that place, they had to rewrite it to say, accept this, and then they filled in their address, you know, so they had to go through all, all the whole general plan, find all the parts where their, their project was gonna be a problem, and rewrite the, the general plan to fit their project, and so a lot of people had a problem with that, not, not just oil development, and that it's filthy, dirty, and, and all that kind of stuff, and, you know, we ought to be looking at alternatives, but it was also, hey, this here's a corporation really taking control of our, of our government, and, and taking the citizens out of the, out of the picture entirely, and so that's really, I can't really contrary, you know, there were parts in their ballot initiative that say, well, if we want to change any part of our project, we'll just come in and tell you what we're going to do, and there'll be, you, you, you don't give us a building, when there's no hearing for a building permit, we're just bringing in what we want to do, and you have to give us a building permit. You know, there's no citizen hearing, no input, no mitigations, no nothing, you just do whatever you want to do, and so, I mean, people reacted pretty strong to that, as you, as you remember, I think the, the final vote on that was 70 to 30 against, and so now, but they're, they're, they never withdrew their application during that whole part, so they still have their application open since 2003, they thought that they would look at trying to drill, sink their wells down in other places outside the city limits, because they're doing slant drilling, they could drill over there and get oil over here. So apparently, they never came to a deal in that regard, and so they're, they came back, and they, they're revising their application, and they're saying now that they, they only want to drill kind of underneath on the land, right around Venico, not do any of this extended reach, and so it'd only be on the land, and the reason for that is, in the general plan, it's, in their municipal code, it's not permitted to have drilling offshore from onshore, but drilling onshore is permitted, and so they would just be drilling onshore. And I believe that we were in the process of finalizing a completed application, and they were about ready to go out and do a revised environmental impact report based on the new project, when, when the price of oil went in the tank, and Venico asked their, that their application be put on hold, and I believe the city's currently looking at whether we should just actually terminate that application if there's not going to be any action on it, because we're, you know, when you start a development application, there's a certain, there's these clocks that start ticking, you know, you've got to take these steps by this time, by this time, by this time, you know, so if that's not gonna happen, it's not, doesn't really seem like a viable application, if we're just gonna miss these deadlines that we've established.
Al, what do you think have been some of the big issues or news stories in the last 50 years since we've incorporated?
I don't know, I wasn't around the whole time, I think the incorporation probably was a pretty big deal, I would have liked to have been around then, I bet, I bet that was a, a pretty stirring debate, hopefully you've talked to some of those people, and you've, you've captured a feeling of that time, but, you know, that would have been a pretty exciting time, because I, you know, I think there's, there's, there's always gonna be those same forces at play, I'm sure the same forces that were at play back then are in play now, but just slightly different.
I think it's a little different, now it's somewhat more business interest versus environmental interest, then it was fiscal, whether it's gonna cost us more money to incorporate.
Yeah.
But any other issues, warrior mascot, freeway widening?
Well, the freeway widening's going on right now, you know, the warrior mascot thing was, was very interesting, because I, I mean, I didn't go to high school in Carpinteria, I went to high school in Santa Barbara, but, you know, I was, I was surprised by, by the depth of reaction to that issue, it was very interesting, but the...
Which, which side were you... Which, which side were you, the depth of reaction against changing the imagery?
Right. I didn't think it was going to be, you know, a lot of people, but you know, it's, it's a matter of identity and you never know, you know, what people's identity are, you know, until it gets threatened. Although I think, you know, to me, what was being proposed was not to change the name warriors, just eliminate some of the clip art or, or some of the images that were offensive to the native people. And so, you know, a lot of us didn't grow up in that culture, we can't understand it. But so, but for me, I mean, you know, I think that we've, we, we need to sometimes pay attention, you know, if there's an easy way to alleviate or remove those, you know, the people felt offended, that, you know, we should take a look at that. But, you know, the freeway widening is going on now. You know, it's, it's, I think there's, it's, Cartaria is really in the, right, right in the, in the, as you, as you, as you expand the freeway to ever have any lands you're, lanes you're expanding to, during that construction, it's always phased. And so there's always a bottleneck somewhere where you always have a, a traffic problem. And right now it's in Cartaria. Once they've, once they've, they did the, finished the Mussel Shoals to Cartaria, the bottleneck is right here in Cartaria. So every morning, it used to be only some mornings, but every morning now, Cartaria Avenue is the third lane on the freeway. And so we're, you know, we're, we're getting some traffic with it now. It's going to, there's a lawsuit, actually a couple lawsuits against, about the EIR for the freeway in Santa Barbara. One of them is fairly easy to resolve. It's just, like, some people at Fernal point that want to have a sound while there. The other one is a little bit more global and it's, it's, I think it's looking more at, you really haven't done enough to provide mass transit. And, and, and you've created, this road is creating some other unintended problems and you haven't really studied that well enough. And you do have to remember that the, the freeway funding, the freeways, just one section of it's going to be, and that's the 10 miles in between Montecito and Cartaria, that's going to be about $500 million. Well, Measure A that we voted on, the voters voted on, is only going to provide $140 million of it. So it's not, it's not funded yet. And they're looking for grants to do that, but it's not funded. The plans are finalized, they're doing some engineering, but they've got this lawsuit and they don't have the money. So not sure when that's, that's all going to be finished. But, but the title of the Measure A, what the voters voted on, a lot of people think, oh, Measure A is 101, Measure A is the widening of the freeway. Well, the title of that was road repair, congestion relief, and one other thing. So the, the most important thing was, was road repair. I mean, that's, that was the first part of the title of Measure A. And then congestion relief was the next part. And that's, that was making HOV lane on the freeway and, and provide rail. And, and so it's important that those, that all those things be, be recognized. Unfortunately, the freeway is taking so much money that, that, you know, there's thoughts that, oh, we ought to take some of the money from road repair so we can put it into freeway because the freeway doesn't have enough money. Well, then the roads are, continue to be in bad shape and, and a lot of roads are in bad shape in Cartaria. But anyway, we'll see what happens on that one.
Anything else you'd like to talk about, any other issues?
Well, I think that the, the plastic bags was a pretty big deal. I, I have some responsibility for that. We had-
Explain what, what that-
Okay, so the, the, the plastic bags issue, it has to do with the, the polyethylene grocery bags, the throwaway grocery bags, the disposable grocery bags that were being handed out like water. And, and in fact, anyway, we received a presentation and a lady from Santa Barbara named Kathy Kelly was brought down, no, that's not the right name, I can't remember her name. Anyway, she, the lady was brought down from, by, by Cartaria Beautiful. And Cartaria Beautiful was, their kind of nexus for that was, oh, there's all this litter everywhere, you know, it's these plastic bags. But, but this lady had a presentation that was much broader than that and showed a lot of health issues related to it, particularly health, health of the ocean. And the, the thrust of that presentation was to get us to do some education. And I, to me, the presentation was so compelling, I was able to persuade the rest of the city council members that, yeah, we should do a ban on this. We should just ban plastic bags as well as styrofoam food containers. Well, it turned out that the plastic, to ban plastic bags was a pretty tough nut to crack. And, but the styrofoam takeout was easy, that was kind of low hanging fruit. So we did that right away, maybe within a month. The plastic bags took a number of years. The issue there was that the plastic bag industry felt threatened and they didn't want cities to ban their plastic bags, then they couldn't sell plastic bags, right? So they were suing everybody. Initially, well, I don't know about initially, but the big, the big lawsuit was, well, if you, if you eliminate plastic bags, then people are going to be using paper more. And so you need to do, if you're going to do that, you need to do an EIR and show what impact you're going to have on all these trees being cut down. And, you know, that's, well, yeah, okay, but which trees are being cut down? They don't, they don't cut down redwoods to make, to make paper bags. They have, they've got some tree farms somewhere, it's a, it's a renewable resource. And, but, but to get around that, I just put, well, let's just, let's just ban all bags altogether. But nobody had a stomach for that at the time. So we decided to go, we had to put that on hold and, and we did. Kathleen Reddington was elected and one of the good things she did was, she was always on that, she was always bringing that back, let's get, let's get moving on the plastic bags. And so, but we did, we did have to wait till the legal climate was cleared up and there was a, there was a case, Manhattan Beach case where the Supreme Court ruled, this is Supreme Court of California, ruled that a small city doesn't need to do this EIR. It would only be a big city where you'd have a big impact that you'd need to do this EIR. And so I think that the threshold was something like population 35,000 or something like that. And so that opened it up and we, you know, we were able to do the ban on plastic bags after that.
About when was the styrofoam ban and then when was the plastic bag?
Ah, boy, Larry. I'm going to say that the styrofoam ban was in 2007. And that the plastic bag ban was, man, 2011 or 12. But don't quote me on that. Of course, you're doing that right now, but-
I'm saying it about it. Any other, so that was a good one. Any other issues come up that you'd like to bring up?
You know, we had a, we, when we were, there was this whole big supermarket thing when, I can't remember how that started, but the owner of the shopping center was not going to renew Albertson's lease. Or maybe it was that Albertson's didn't want their lease renewed, but I, I think they did. Maybe they were trying to cut a deal with Vons. Anyway, Vons was interested in moving into where Albertson's is. I believe that's how it went because it was a larger store area. And so eventually Albertson's came around and said, yeah, we want this. And they struck a deal. But they wanted to, they also wanted to expand into Rite Aid. And of course, Rite Aid left for whatever reason. Rite Aid was next door, then Rite Aid moved over on Lynn in a smaller space. But so we, we were a little concerned about all this stuff and so we, we passed a big box ordinance. And so the upshot of that is when you've got a, a, a commercial development that's over 20,000 square feet, I believe that's the threshold, square feet, that, you know, you've got to meet certain conditions, this, this, this ordinance kicks in. And there were, there were a lot of, a lot of things behind that, rationales for doing that. A lot of these, you know, I think Costco wanted to come in here at one point, the, when Brad and Don and Mike were on the city council and I think they wanted to go out the east end of town and, and basically the, the people said, no, that we don't want one of these big box stores. And, you know, I think there's, there's some, there are some problems and, and those, those kinds of stores tend to kill local businesses. And, you know, what, what happens is, is they, they get a little, they get a little Hallmark card section in there. And so they start doing, they, they get a pharmacy in there. And, you know, so they start competing with local businesses in all these different areas. It's kind of a Walmart model. And, and so, and so it's, it's not only that, you know, these local stores provide a business or an income for, for people that live here and they're your, your friends and neighbors and all that community stuff. But also there was a, a study that showed that for every dollar that's spent in a chain store, 13 cents of the dollar remains in the community. But in a, in a locally owned store, 47 cents of the, of the dollar is, is left in the, in the community. And so we, you know, we did, we're able to do some things with Albertson's and obviously it's doing that kind of thing. It's got, you know, it's, 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 we were able to, well, they did a lot of stuff voluntarily. They, they bought Shepherd Place Pharmacy and, and that's their pharmacy now. So, you know, that, that kind of helped and they promised to, to hire local people and, and things like that. And so that's, I mean, that, that helped. And anyway, well, we still have that big box ordinance on the books and, and so we, it didn't really, it didn't, we didn't need to use it with Albertson's, but, but it's there for the future.
Anything else?
Probably, there's probably a lot.
Do you want to mention Beasartes?
Beasartes, well, it's, what, what that is, 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 you know, we have a, a, a large community of immigrants in Cartaria. And they're not, they're not, you know, just like our local people of, of Central, South American, Mexican descent, but, but, but recent immigrants that have come to, to Cartaria. And, you know, there's some that live in people's self-help housing projects and other places, obviously. And the, the idea, Beasartes is an arts education outreach program started by my wife Kathleen Lord. And the idea behind it is to provide the students who are mostly children, but, you know, we allow any age to attend this too. It's to develop a feeling of self-esteem. And both through the creation of, of an art piece that, you know, you conceive of it, you do it and you complete it and, and you feel good about yourself. And, you know, when people mess up, we try to encourage them, oh, no, here's how you can fix it or you can always fix it. And, you know, you can, there's always a way, you don't need to be despondent and despair, you know, what you can, you can keep working on it. But there's been a lot of, we had, we, we get grants for this project and we've had to do a lot of research about these things. And the research shows that children who do art, all children who do art, get better grades in school. They do better on tests and they're more rounded in life. You know, so art, art helps the brain learn in all areas. And I think we're, you know, I, I don't really understand all the school stuff that's going on now, but, you know, I know this, no child left behind testing stuff is, I mean, it's very heavily emphasizing that to the point where there's, there's no room for art in the curriculum anymore. And so we're trying, we're, and also it's, art's very important, our research showed for minority students, it helps them learn the language better, it helps them do better in school and, and it helps them assimilate better in, in the broader culture. And so we've been doing that since about 2003 in Cartaria. We go to the people's self-help housing projects and we teach the kids art. We try to bring, you know, the other part of self-esteem is having a sense of value or sense of worth of the culture that you come from. And a lot of these kids really don't know anything about the Mexican culture or not very much, other than, you know, just growing up with their, their parents. You know, a lot of them will come from a small village right to the United States and, and they don't realize that, that Mexico actually has a very, very deep, very sophisticated artistic tradition. And so I think it helps them to see that. We try to base all the, all the lessons in Mexican art. My wife Kathleen studied art in Mexico, so she's very familiar with it. We have some, we have a director, an instructional director and two assistants or aides. And these are all people that were in the program and now they've, they've either graduated from high school or on their way and, and they, you know, we've employed them to, to implement the, the program. We also have some volunteers from the community that also help. But I think this, you know, employing these people helps the other students see that, you know, they're, become a role model as, you know, here's, here's a road I could go, you know, we, you know, art, art can be some sort of career. And anyway, it just shows them, you know, another, another path.
Nice.
But yeah, it's been, it's been very worthwhile for us to see these kids grow up.
Do you want to say anything about the mix of Hispanic and Anglo cultures in the area?
Uh, no, not really.
Okay, and you have kind of through the art program, which is fascinating.
Yeah.
Well, thanks a lot, Al, and thanks for your good, good service.
My pleasure, Larry. Thanks for yours also.